Welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Martin County Board of Education. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity that we have together and just discuss the business of the school board. Father, we pray that you will be with us, help us to make the decisions that need to be made and the decisions that will bring honor and glory to your name. For this we pray in your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Alrighty, need a motion to approve the agenda?
Aye.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Now I need a motion for the consent agenda.
The motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. And next is recognitions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I don't know if you've noticed lately, but Martin County Schools has got a lot to celebrate. And tonight, we're going to celebrate a little bit more. We'd like to ask the EJ Hayes Elementary Battle of the Books team, any members that are here tonight to join us up front. Oh, they've got their shirts on and everything, love it. The EJ Hayes School Team won the Martin County Schools Elementary Battle of the Books, and this wonderful group went on to take second in the Regional Battle of the Books Competition held in Pitt County. Being one of the smaller teams in the competition did not stop Destiny Smith, Revvis Turner, Javi Beres, Hosanna Sanford, Mauryo Calabria from Exelon. A tremendous thank you to Ms. Joanne Wall and Ms. Sheila Toler, the coaches, for their dedication to this project. And we are so proud of you guys for their hard work and all for your determination. Way to represent Martin County Schools.
And I'm going to say to, I've just got to chime in. This team was second place in the entire region. The entire Northeast of North Carolina, that is a huge deal to play second in the entire region, only to a much bigger Pitt County Schools team. So I just want you guys to know, these people worked hard, these coaches worked hard, these students worked hard. This is a huge accomplishment, and Martin County Schools is so proud of each and every one of them. Congratulations.
Alright, next up, we'd like to invite members of the Riverside Middle School Battle of the Books Team up to join us. I'll give them a second to get up here. That's okay. Okay, after winning the district title, Riverside Middle took second place in the Northeast Regional Competition, which I believe was held right here at Martin Community College. Congratulations go to Mason Rebels, Deja Outlaw, Wyatt Tyson, Ricky Wilson, Kiva Perry, Audrey Stanton, Jillian Powell, Coach Lisa Bargel, and Coach Landon Leggett. Thank you so much for your investment in our students, and students, great job. We are so proud of you guys, a way to represent us.
Again, I'm going to say another shout out. Our middle school team also plays second in the region, only to a much bigger Pitt County Schools team. This is amazing. Both of our teams were the highest performing teams in Martin County, and just represented us so well at that regional level. That does not happen without a ton of hard work. So, we are so proud of you guys. Keep working this hard, and you guys have a bright future. And thank you to our coaches who also invested so much time and effort in our student success. Congratulations.
Okay, next up, we'd like to ask Ms. April Joyner and Ms. Yuzeri Williams. We'll turn the page and go to CTE forum. Earlier this semester, several members of the Martin County FCCLA, which is Family Career and Community Leaders of America Team, traveled to the state convention with their local group leader, Ms. April Joyner from Riverside High School. Two members, Ariana Howard and Michaela Griffin, placed in the top five in their categories in the state level. Ariana was third in nutrition and wellness, and Michaela fifth in professional presentation. We're proud of all our students who worked to compete at this level. And tonight, we'd like to introduce to you a young lady who took it up a notch by running by her state office. Ladies and gentlemen, introducing Mrs. Yuzeri Williams, your state vice president for FCCLA. And we cannot wait to see, we're going to see more from this young lady. We cannot wait to see what's going to happen next. Thanks, Ms. Joyner. Alright, next up, we're going to ask our 4H competitors that are here tonight, Peyton, if you'll join us, and we'll add to the group in just a minute. This year, Ms. Patterson, where are you? You're not getting off the hook. This year, we have seen a continued fierce growth in our Future Farmers of America program and interest in the related courses, which has been so exciting to see. And tonight, we would like to recognize a group of students who have taken leadership roles and represented Martin County. First off, Ms. Reagan Cowan, who could not be here tonight. It's Reagan's birthday, we're giving her a pass tonight. And Peyton Rogers. These ladies showed goats with the Martin County 4H Youth Livestock Show and Sale, and they did it well and represented us in amazing fashion. Peyton took senior showman champion, and Reagan took reserve showman champion. In the medium weight market division, Reagan was champion with her Kodak Black, and Peyton took reserve champion with her four-legged partner, Willie Nelson. And if you have never been out back to meet Kodak and Willie, you should. It's a time well spent. They're interesting characters, so well done, ladies. That's the first one. Stay right there, Peyton, we're not going to do you yet. We'd ask the rest of our FFA folks that are here tonight to come join us now. We want to recognize members who have represented the district in the FFA district, region competitions. First off is Ms. Tania James, who placed third in the Northeast Regional Creed Speaking Competition, and she will now go on to the state competition in June. And I had a chance to hear her practice this a little bit. I don't know what her practicing sounded like, I can only imagine what it was like during showtime. So, great job. And then next up, our Martin FFA Ag Sales Team, which is Reagan Cowan, Peyton Rogers, Molly Harrington, and Landon Stalls, placed first in the regional competition for ag sales, and are going on to the states in June. Reagan also received the highest individual score in this competition, so way to go. Okay, and I'm going to turn over technology.
I'm going to recognize the robotics team, and Josh McIntyre was the coach. I just was hanging out with him. So I'm going to turn it over to him and let him recognize his team.
Alright, if the robotics team of Martin County come up. So this is a recognition of the Martin County Robotics Team, which is Team RAM. And so, the kids actually came up with their own team. Just real quick, just give a quick background for our robotics team, which we competed in the first competition. And the purpose of FIRST is, FIRST seeks to prepare the young people of today, of the world of tomorrow. Their vision is to transform our culture by creating a world where science and technology are celebrated, and young people dream of becoming science and technology leaders. And the mission of FIRST is to provide life-changing robotics program that gives young people the skills, confidence, and resilience to build a better world. And I have to say, this team is very, very resilient. We got into this competition in January to build our robot, put it together, have all of the qualifying components and parts together by the time we had to go compete. And so, the first is the recruiting and preparation part. We actually had a team come in from Pitt County to kind of explain what robotics was to our students, and we traveled around to, of course, the IC Building. We traveled to Innovation Campus. We traveled to Riverside High School. And to be able to show our South Creek, our Riverside High School students and our Innovation Campus students about the robotics competition. From there, we had signups. And then, the next slide, you'll see that we went right into preparation for the competition. Here, we're at the competition. You see, it was kind of loading in. First time ever being there. You should have seen the students' faces when we got there. It was like, man, this is mind blowing. And so, we got there, we got loaded up, set in, and we went right to work on our robot, getting it prepared. This year was crescendo for FIRST. And within that, we had to come up with a way for the robot to be able to shoot musical notes into the playing field. And so, they did really well. They built the body. As you can see here, the next slide will show our safety check and judges. I'm going to have actually one of us two just give a brief talk about what his experience was. Actually, our team captain. But you see here, first day, we got excellent, well done for our Pitt's safety check. And they just blew the judges away in their conversation. Nazir, if you'll come, he's going to give just a brief overlook of his experience.
Well, first off, the experience was, it was a really nice experience. I personally, personally, really liked being around other people who share the same passion for science, technology, engineering, and math. A lot, you don't see a lot of that around here, so to see that, it really touched my heart. When we got there, it was just mind blowing to see all the different robots. They have so different, some robots are personalized. They did different things, and the strategizing part was really the best part to me, figuring out how, where your robot can fit in and how it can help your team alliance. Another part I really liked was the community. Everybody was so willing to help us, even though we didn't have everything together. Everybody still stepped in, all the other teams stepped in and helped us get to what we needed to be able to compete. So even though we didn't go as far as I would have liked, what we did accomplish, I'm still very proud of, and I'm ready to do it again next year.
Alright.
Thank you, Nazir. And so, just as well as Nazir was our team leader, our team captain, each and every one of them took leadership and took ownership in the team. And we had our student ambassadors, Leah and Michaela, who kind of walked down and kind of talked about things in first. We had, and I could just name each and every one of them, all the different things they did, but they all really put a hand into this. So much to the point that we stayed to the very, very end. And you see here, the competition, one of the rounds we were in. Of course, we competed alongside two other teams, which created our alliance. And we beat out one team 56 to 17. But so much to the point that we won the Rookie of the Year Award from FIRST Robotics, which I thought was very good, and they really deserved this. And so, that's the very first picture that you saw that was on. Everybody kind of stood together. And so, we got that, and come on, let's give them a hand for. So now, what we want to do is just, we want to present them with certificate of appreciation. And the first one here is Leah Browning. Michaela Davis. Nazir Turner. Jamil Morris. Tywan Thomas, who we call Pop. Terrence Whitley. I've been practicing this all day, Erin. I've been practicing this all day. Aaron Livingston. Joshir Rayner. And last but not least, the one who kept us going the entire trip, kept us energized and motivated and laughing, Ethan Q. Thank you, guys.
And I do want to give a special thanks to these coaches. This is not a small thing, okay? They built a robot from scratch. Other teams had worked on this all year, but we ended up winning the grant mid-year. And it was something the kids really wanted to do. And the coaches were like, if the kids want this, we're going to make this happen. We didn't even get all the pieces to build the robot in time, but our kids said they wanted to go. And so, these people made it happen. And this is not a tight, like, this is a, they were up till midnight the night before the competition. They were there all day Saturday, and they were there all day Sunday at this competition. And so, when great things happen for our children, it's because the adults invest in them. So I just want to say thank you to the adults that gave so much time after school, during school, and over the weekend to make this happen for our kids. Thank you so much.
And now, the superintendent's report.
Alright, as you can see, there are so many wonderful things happening in Martin County Schools, to the point that I started putting together the superintendent's report, and I was like, wow, a lot, a whole lot of really good things are happening in Martin County Schools. But I am going to try to share them quickly, but I do want to highlight them because there are some amazing people investing in our children, and some wonderful things are happening. First of all, we do want to make sure that you know that it is time for kindergarten registration. If you have a child who will be five by August 31st, we need you. You want to be a part of Martin County Schools with all the amazing things happening. Don't wait till this summer, because you see, we have to make classes, and we have to assign teachers to our kindergarten classes. So numbers matter. We want to make sure we maintain small class sizes and that we know what's coming in August, so that we can best prepare for you. So please help us in the community and churches, special functions, organizations. Make sure that people know that we are registering kindergarteners now, so that we can have accurate number to make the next year the best year ever. Also, wanted to say that we are offering kindergarten sneak peek during the month of April. We actually invited rising kindergarteners into their kindergarten classrooms. Come to the school, bring your parent. Let me show you what, how amazing our schools are. We invited them into the kindergarten classroom to meet the teachers, see what they were going to be learning about. They got to go to the cafeteria and have lunch at the school. And it was just an overall great experience. As a parent, we want you to know that it's a big deal to send your child to us every day. And so, we wanted to invite you in and see what amazing things await your student. If we get enough new registrations, we will hold another kindergarten sneak peek prior to the end of the year. So please help us in ensuring our numbers are accurate. If you need a private tour, if you missed the sneak peek opportunity, we will be happy to schedule that for you. We want every parent to have that option. We also want parents to understand that Martin County Schools is a school of choice. If you are districted for a school but would like to attend another school, you do need to fill out that form and have it submitted to the central office by May 31st. Again, we are a school of choice district, so if you would like to attend another school, all you have to do is fill out this form and submit it to us, and then we will be in touch very, very soon. You do need to do this each year. So even if you attended the school last year, if you're out of district, you still need to present, turn in this form this year again as well. And please be cognizant of the date. No late applications will be accepted, again, because we have to make adequate plans for next school year and ensuring we're offering our children the best. Last month, we also celebrated Bring Your Legislature to School Day. Representative Shelley Willingham actually came out to the Innovation Campus and toured, and some of these very students that you saw tonight spent time with him, telling them about the amazing things happening in Martin County Schools. I did want to say a special thank you to Representative Willingham for participating in that day and spending the time with us. Great things are happening in Martin County Schools, and we want to make sure that our legislators know about those things and are ready to support them. Martin County Schools held the Special Olympics last month, and if you weren't there, I am sorry because you missed out. Our children had the best day. From the parade, where everyone was cheered for and celebrated, to participate in numerous events throughout the day. It was an amazing, amazing turnout. Turnout of athletes and turnout of volunteers and support. Community support, volunteers from different students throughout the district. It was so amazing. I'm not going to start naming names, but so many people contributed to making the Special Olympics a spectacular day for our students. So thank you to everyone who was involved with that. It was truly, truly wonderful. We also want to celebrate Ms. Hill's class. Ms. Hill's class did an entrepreneurship project where they actually made dog treats and sold them to the community. They're going to use this money in the special needs classroom to go on field trips and buy special things for that classrooms. I actually visited when these students were making these. So they took orders online. It was, they had to close the order form. They got so many. It was such a wonderful support of this class. These students then went to the Innovation Campus, and I'm talking, they made the treats themselves, from counting, doing the measurement, to blending everything together, to actually doing all the baking. And they had some wonderful volunteers to help and support them too. So thank you to everybody who supported this class from Ms. Hill's class at Riverside High School and South Creek High School. It was a wonderful, wonderful day, and your support made it an excellent experience. And you're going to be hearing a little bit more from these students coming up very soon. We also had our prom during the month of April. This went down as one of the best proms in history. That's the feedback that I got from staff and from students. It was a wonderful night. Everyone was absolutely beautiful. It was held right here in Martin County. It was a joint prom between South Creek and Riverside, and it couldn't have gone any better. Again, thank you to the staff, the volunteers, and the students for making it such a memorable and wonderful event. We want to invite you to the 2024 Martin County Schools Baccalaureate Service. Here we have the information. It will be Sunday, June 2nd at 3:00 p.m. We hope you'll be able to come out to Martin County Auditorium and support all of our seniors. Speaking of seniors, the WITN Best of the Class. Congratulations to Kamala Williams and Cameron Lilly. You can hear their stories on WITN, and they are representing Martin County Schools as the 2024 Best of the Class. During the month of April, MCS also announced some leadership changes. Mr. Howard, who will be moving to South Creek Middle School. Ms. Leann Hudson will be the new principal of Williamson Primary School. And Mr. Pake will be the new principal of Jamesville Elementary School. We are so excited about these changes, as we know that they have done a wonderful job. Each of these staff members have done a wonderful job in their current season, and the best is yet to come in their new season. We want to make sure parents are well informed, and so we are working hard to communicate everything going on at the end of the year. So we have compiled a list of all end-of-year testing. You can find this on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, as well as our Martin County Schools webpage. All of our end-of-grade testing dates are here on this calendar. And again, you can find them online. We actually begin our testing on Thursday with third grade ELAs. So send us all of your prayers and positive vibes. Our teachers and children have worked hard this year, and now it's their time to shine. We will be having our summer feeding program this year. Our two sites will be EJ Hayes Elementary and South Creek Elementary. Breakfast will be from 8:00 to 9:30, and lunch will be served from 11:00 to 12:30. The sites will be open June 12th through July 25th, Monday through Thursday only. We are not open on Fridays. We will be closed the week of July 4th. We look forward to feeding our families this summer. These meals are free of charge for all who do attend, and so we look forward. Walk-ins are welcome. This section of the superintendent's report focuses on Martin Offers More. First of all, we want to share that we will actually be having a new Health Careers Lab. Go ahead and click that video if you will, Mr. Bullock. At the IC. This lab is going to give us so many new opportunities in the healthcare field. We're going to be looking at things like dentistry. Right now, you're looking at the dentistry modules, where children are going to be able to have hands-on experience and figure out if dentistry is the right profession, is something they want to go into. We're adding veterinary science, where children will actually be able to complete these modules and figure out if veterinary science is something they want to do. We are going to be adding biomedical engineering. We're going to be adding biotechnology. We are going to be adding emergency medicine. So students who are thinking about going into the field of EMT, will be able to get that hands-on experience. We're adding mental health. We're adding nursing, pharmacology, sports medicine, therapeutic services, and the list goes on and on. The modules will be a part of the new Health Careers 1A and 2B courses that will be offered this coming school year. So many wonderful opportunities happening in Martin County Schools. The hands-on opportunities are spectacular. So this will be launching in August. Moving along, we did want to make sure parents are aware that students can complete internships in Martin County Schools. Here are two of our students actually out there in the field. One thinks she would like to be a teacher, so she is interning in one of our elementary schools. Another wants to go into the nursing field, so they're actually working in Dr. Manning's office. We want to give our kids hands-on experience that allows them to determine if that career field they think they like is something they're actually going to be interested in for long term. So thank you to our community partners for allowing us to have these internships with our community businesses. Thank you to our CTE department and Mr. Nguyen for really working hard to establish these partnerships to give our kids these amazing hands-on opportunities. We are bringing back our German Exchange Program. Martin County Schools is hitting the road for interested students. So be sure to reach out. We have several people that you can contact. The names are at the bottom of this flyer. Ms. Leggett is actually in the house with us tonight. So this is a great thing for a college resume and a great opportunity to see the world. They've just held their first interest meeting, but if you are interested in being a part of the German Exchange Program, please reach out to one of these people, and they're going to tell you more. Driver Education, want to make sure that any interested students that need that information for this summer or need the class this summer, it is time for registration on May 29th and 30th. Again, parents, we are working hard to make sure you are informed. So we have taken every end-of-year celebration, from the kindergarten awards at WPS to the fifth grade milestone ceremony at Rogers, to our high school graduation, and every today or graduation, and it is compiled in one organized list for you. It's on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and our website. You can click this link to see more, but will help you, especially if you have multiple children, know everything going on at the end of the year. All fifth and eighth graders throughout the district will be having milestone celebrations. will be having milestone celebrations as they move up to a new school next year, and all of that will be organized here for you. We had some big wins this month in Martin County Schools. First off, if you heard tonight that our FFA won big at the regional livestock show. Again, congratulations to Peyton Rogers and Reagan Cowan. They represented Martin County Schools so very well. Congratulations again to our Battle of the Books team. Martin County Schools had the elementary and middle school regional runner-up for both Battle of the Books team, the highest-performing Battle of the Books team in Martin County Schools. We are, in Martin County. We are so proud of how our students represented us at the regional competition. Great things happened there, and shout out to their coaches. Our FFA won big as well in the Regional FFA Rally, which was held in Elizabeth City at COA. Several students who were actually recognized tonight, including Sammy Bennett, Elijah Lassiter, Jayla Everett, Landon Stalls, competed in ag mechanics. Reagan Cowan competed in public speaking, and Peyton Rogers completed in employability skills. Several of those students came home first place. The ag sales team earned the highest scoring individual. The hunter safety team was recognized for second place in the region. Tania James competed in Creed and won third place in the region. So proud of these students. Our FFA team has really excelled this year. Thank you to all the leaders of that program for making it happen. Our math champions went to East Carolina University and competed regionally and won big. Third grade Quiz Bowl, third place. Seventh grade, second place. Eighth grade, first place. Breakout Room, sixth grade, third place. Seventh grade, third place. Eighth grade, first place. They also had some escape room challenges in which our students did very well. Overall, our elementary division, our students placed third place in the region, and our middle school tied for second. And as if that's not enough to celebrate, we even had a Rubik's Cube challenge, and our very own Krishan Patel took first place and actually completed the Rubik's Cube the fastest. Shout out again to everyone who worked with these students. They sure shined bright at East Carolina. Right now, as we speak, these beautiful kiddos are on their way to Iowa. Some are on a plane as we speak, some have drove, but they are getting ready to represent Martin County Schools in the World Championship Odyssey of the Mind Competition. And we are so proud. They actually performed Friday morning for the championship, so send them all of your prayers and positive vibes because they have worked incredibly hard this year. These kids have been here on Saturday. They've been here after school, and so has their coaches. So please send them all your positive vibes. Martin County Schools is being represented by them on the world stage this week. We'll be sharing more about that coming up. Congratulations to Lauren Campbell and Isabel Taylor, who've been accepted to the ECU Future Teachers Program. This is a big win for these students and for Martin County Schools. June 12th through 14th, the ECU College of Education will offer these students Future Teachers of North Carolina Program, which is called the Pirate Institute. These students will be representing Martin County Schools, and we cannot wait to bring them back as future MCS teachers. Martin County Schools is the 2A Regional Golf Champion. So proud of these kiddos winning the regional championship. They also represented us very well at the state championship. Thank you to these students and coaches for all of your hard work. Our tennis team made it to round two of the state playoffs, and it was a close match with a major rain delay, but they, in the end, couldn't quite pull it out. But they represented Martin County Schools so well, and round two of the state playoffs is nothing to be ashamed of. This month, we also celebrated the superintendent's Art Choice Awards. Many students from across the district competed in the competition and then were celebrated at a special banquet. The winners for each school were invited to attend with their families and receive special awards. Thank you to all the students and parents who came to this special event. Great things are happening in the arts in Martin County Schools. If you love music, art, Martin County Schools is definitely the place to be. How about these students graduating from college before they graduate from high school next month? Congratulations to Cameron Lilly, Noah Cottle, and Haley Wheeler, who all graduated from Martin Community College this past weekend before they graduate from Riverside High School next month. We are so very proud of them, and I also want to give a special shout out to Martin Community College. Two of these students ended up being in the third round of the state playoffs for baseball the night of the college graduation. No problem for Martin Community. Dr. Miller simply held a private graduation for those students so that they could attend the state playoffs and invited their parents to attend. I was able to be there with them, and they were able to graduate with their college degree and still be able to participate in the state playoffs. Thank you to Martin Community and Dr. Miller for making that happen for our children, and congratulations to those students. Martin County Schools has been selected to host a state conference. NCDPI, Office of Digital Teaching and Learning, is excited to announce that NC Bold will be hosted right here in Martin County Schools at Riverside Middle School. So people from across the state are going to be coming to Martin County Schools to participate in this amazing conference this summer. Special thanks to our technology department and Amy Bennett for working hard to put this together and have us selected to host. We are excited and honored to have people from across the state right here in Martin County. Our boys' baseball team did have a third-round finish. It was down to the wire and very, very close, but we are so proud, third-round finish for Martin County Baseball. Students from our band programs from both middle and high school competed in solo and ensemble, and wow, look at the awards. Superiors and excellent all throughout, so many different combinations. And if you want to see them in action, come out Thursday night to the high school band concert. We're going to have some solo and ensemble performing before the high school and middle school band concert at Martin Auditorium on Thursday night. I believe the concert begins at 7:00, and solo and ensemble, come a little early, and you're going to hear some of these awesome acts and see some visual art as well. Our students competed in the 2A State Track Championship. I don't know if you've noticed, but there's a lot of Martin County students in state championship play right now. Congratulations to Janaya Ransom and Janaya Dolberry for their performance in the 2A Track State Championship. Ransom placed fifth in the entire state on high jump, and Dolberry placed 12th in the entire state with a 26.8 in the 200. And Dolberry also broke the Martin County Schools record that's been held for many years earlier this year. So congratulations to these track athletes. Thank you to Coach Jinks for supporting them, coaching them, and taking them to the state championship. And also, we have big news in Martin County softball. Martin County Schools is in the regional finals. We are in the final four for the state championship in softball. That is definitely something to celebrate. We were in the top of the seventh inning the other night in our last game against Camden, and we were down three to zero. Slowly, we got a hit, then we got another hit. And then we scored a couple and got bases loaded. Bases loaded. Erica Sturgill up the bat, and she hits a grand slam. We won, and then we still had to hold them in the bottom of the second, but we won the game six to three. And our Martin County softball team is now in the final four. They play tomorrow at Midway at 6:30. They play here on Thursday at 6:00. So two opportunities to come out and support our team. If it's the best two of three series, so if a third game is needed, it will be played next Monday. Please send your prayers, positive vibes up for these girls because they have surely worked hard, and there's one thing I will say about this team. They never give up. So congratulations to them and their coach. Keep going. Take it all the way to the state championship. Last year, when I came to Martin County Schools, parents said, and teachers said, "We want more summer camp opportunities." Well, this year, we've got you covered. We have many summer camp opportunities, from a STEM camp for grades 3-2 through 8, a career discovery summer camp for rising sixth graders, career exploration camp for rising eighth and ninth graders, a health sciences class camp for rising ninth and 10th graders. The list goes on and on, and we also have an organized flyer for you that outlines all the summer camp opportunities. If you're looking for things this summer to keep your kids busy, keep their mind engaged, keep them learning and growing over the summer, we've got amazing opportunities for you. This is the information. It's posted on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, as well as our website. So many wonderful things are happening in Martin County Schools. I want to say thank you to our teachers, to our coaches, to our administrators, to our bus drivers, to our custodians, to every single person that is a part of Martin County Schools family. I want to say thank you. Great things are happening, and success is happening because of you and because of what you pour into our children's lives every single day. Thank you for coming in early and staying late. Thank you for doing whatever it takes to help our kids be successful. They are being successful, and it's because of your hard work. And I want you to know that it's valued and appreciated. So thank you for all you're doing. Thank you to our parents for entrusting our children to us. It is a treasure and a gift, and we don't take that lightly. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Wow. I've been following this school, or Martin County Schools, since 1960, and I believe this is the most exciting time I have ever seen.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the information and action items. Lifewise, Eric Willard?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Willard. I'm the Associate Minister at Macedonia Christian Church here in Williamson. I've been there, served for 18 years, and thank you for the opportunity on the agenda tonight just to share with you about a program I think has just tons of potential to impact students here in Martin County in a very positive way. The program is called Lifewise, and it's based around a concept called Release Time Religious Instruction. Most people, when I've asked them, have they heard of that? They say no, because I said no too, till about a year and a half ago. Kind of found out some more information about it. But basically, this concept has been around for a long time, since the 1920s here in America. Been functioning since then, all the way up to the present day in different counties and states across the nation. And basically what it is, it is religious biblical instruction during school hours. Now, I hear that, and the first time I heard it, I said, "Well, that's not possible because that would be a violation of the First Amendment, the establishment of religion by the state." But got to learn more about it and discovered it's not an issue there. In 1952, there was a case brought to the Supreme Court, Zorick versus Clausen, about the legality of release time religious instruction programs. And the Supreme Court ruled they were completely legal, completely constitutional, as long as they met three requirements. Number one being that it was not held on school property. Number two, that it was privately funded, so no taxpayer dollars or school resources used for the program. And number three, parental permission was given for every child who participates in the program. And so again, I want just to share some statistics with you about Lifewise, and then maybe answer some of the most common questions that get asked around this concept of release time religious instruction, and then any other questions you might have. So let me just share some statistics about the current impact of Lifewise in states across our nation. The first programs were launched in 2018 in Ohio, and in 2022, they started a nationwide campaign to, again, to just take the program nationwide in other states than just Ohio. So they set a goal at the end of 2022 to go from 36 schools, where the program was currently being offered, to 84 schools, and they ended that year with approval in 133 schools. Their goal for the 2023, in order to keep pace, was to get approval in 200 schools. At the end of that year, they reached approval in 342 schools. Year-to-date, they've gotten approval in 415 schools across 15 states, serving 30,000 students through this program. The reason I wanted to share those statistics with you is that if Martin County approved this program as an option for our students, we would not be on an island all by ourselves on this. There are lots of other schools that have done this since 2018. They've had no issues. No program that Lifewise has started has ceased to function because it failed or there were other issues. All are healthy and functioning. So again, we'd have lots of people we can get guidance from and kind of learn the ropes from on these things. So again, we would definitely not be all by ourselves on this. I will mention this, that if Martin County were the first county in the state of North Carolina to approve this, we would be the first county, which I think is a good thing. There are two other counties right now considering this in the process of getting approval. We're a little bit ahead of them at this time, as far as that goes. But I do want to just share a couple of things with you. I know in the agenda notes, you had some information already there in your email, and I had some of these hard copies passed around as well. I apologize, I think there were only five copies, and so I don't know that everybody got one. But if you could take this copy right here with the logo on the front and just turn over a couple pages. Just want to bring some to your attention real quick. You'll see at the top of the page, it says Outcome Studies. Page looks like this, has the arrows pointing upward. So just a couple pages into that. In 2023, Lifewise commissioned a third-party study to come in, so an independent group to come and look at the impact of the program, somebody that's not connected to them in any way, so they get honest results from the impact they've been able to have. And so they did this study with the programs that have been running the longest, so the ones that started in Ohio around 2018. And this is some of the results that they found, that students who participated in the Lifewise program, school attendance rates increased by 7% in years two and three. The study showed students who participated in Lifewise experienced improvement in behavior, and they measured that based on in-and-out-of-school suspensions that took place with those students. And by year four, students who participated in Lifewise saw an improvement in academic performance as well. Now, I'd be the first to say, I don't believe that is solely because of Lifewise. I mean, obviously, schools were doing good things. Parents were doing good things. There were lots of different factors, I think, feed into that. But I also don't think it's just coincidental that the students who were part of the study, who were Lifewise participants, that they saw those improvements in those students. So I do think it had a positive impact there. On the backside of the same page, just flip it over there, you'll see at the top, Spring 2023 Surveys. Those were surveys done amongst the educators and parents of those school districts that offered Lifewise. I'm not going to get into the details of that. You can see it, but the overwhelming responses to that from both educators and parents was very positive. So what I want to do real quickly next is just take a few minutes and answer what tend to be the most commonly asked questions when it comes to Lifewise, when it comes to this idea of release time religious instruction. So one of the first questions I want to deal with, have there been any lawsuits brought by citizens or civil rights groups against Lifewise because of it being religious in nature? The answer is no. There have been a few individuals in some of the communities who expressed concern when they first hear about it because they don't know how it works, and they think, "Well, so the schools with their resources and their tax dollars are teaching the Bible during school hours in the public schools." But that's a misunderstanding of what the program is, and once those individuals got an understanding of what it was, they realized, "Hey, this is legal. The Supreme Court has ruled on it." They may not have liked it, but they realized, "Hey, this is a legal thing." And so there have not been any issues there up to this point. Another common question, how do you ensure that students are safe before, during, and after each class? Well, Lifewise has very detailed safety protocols that pretty much mirror what the public schools have as far as how they handle that. All Lifewise employees, as well as volunteers, because it takes both to make this work, but all employees and volunteers of Lifewise go through background checks, and those background checks are made available to every school, to any school board member or a... checks are made available to every school, to any school board member or administrator who wants access to those. Access is available for any individual who participates in Lifewise, as far as an employee or volunteer. Another common question, does Lifewise have protocol for behavioral issues? Yes, Lifewise, I'm condensing it here, but they follow basically a three-step approach in the classroom. If there's a behavioral issue, obviously, the student is addressed and said, "Hey, if you want to continue to participate in this, we expect bad behavior. If it continues, maybe there's an issue between two students. Those students may be put in different places in the classroom to deal with that. If a third warning has to come, the volunteer, one of the volunteers..." So each classroom is designed to have a teacher and two volunteers. One of those volunteers would escort that student back to school, and the behavioral issues would be reported to the school once they got them back. So that's a very simplified explanation of kind of how they handle behavioral issues there. Another common question, who assumes liability for students during Lifewise? Lifewise does. They assume liability for the student from the moment they exit the door of the school building to the moment they re-enter the door of the school building. Lifewise carries liability insurance that covers all Lifewise programs across the nation. Another question, will the attendance of students be reported to the school? Yes, attendance is taken for every class and reported to the schools. Another question, who is responsible for teaching the students, however they trained, certified, and hired? Teachers would be interviewed by a local program director, and that would be a hired full-time position, so this would be somebody who lives locally here in Martin County, who would be serving in that role. So that program director and the representatives from Lifewise would interview that individual who would be interested in one of the teaching positions, because those teaching positions would be paid as well. But they would interview them, and then all volunteers and teachers are required to go through training with Lifewise in order to participate in the program. Obviously certifications, teaching certifications, you know, if they've taught elementary school in the past, that kind of thing, all those things are bonuses and are taken into consideration as well, but it's not mandated that they have to have those degrees to teach for Lifewise. Another common question, what are students taught at Lifewise? So if you'll take the, actually, the handout you had in the email, I think that you received, and if you'll scroll maybe to page 14, you'll see a list there, and what you have there is basically an overview of the entire first year of what students would be taught through Lifewise. And basically what you see is a big, long list of virtues, character traits, things like patience, endurance, integrity, respectfulness, perseverance, courage, different things along those lines, and the Bible story that is used to teach that character trait. And so you can kind of get an overview of what all is done during that first year. And what I really appreciate about how they design their material is that it doesn't just give you the knowledge of the Bible story, or it doesn't just give you the knowledge of what that virtue or character trait is, but it also spends a lot of time talking about, "Okay, so now how do you use this? How do you practice this with your classmates? How do you practice this with your teacher? With your family? And just in different scenarios, how would you live this out to become just a more well-rounded person?" So they do a great job making it apply to life. So if you, one last thing here, if you'll flip back to the hard copy handout, probably the biggest question that is often asked is, "Okay, so how does Lifewise fit into the school schedule?" You know, this is designed, the release time religious instruction programs are designed to be during the school day, and generally, they've gone with that approach, because what they found with before and after-school programs is that it really doesn't allow a lot of kids who would like to be a part of it to participate because of transportation issues or extracurricular issues during the day. So in that handout there, on that page there, actually, on the front side, two examples from elementary schools, and then on the backside, two or three other elementary schools, and it gives you some examples of how they've incorporated that into their weekly and monthly schedule to make it work. What most schools have done is they make Lifewise available to students who would be interested during these elective rotation. Some have done it during library time, some have done it during intervention time. They've just found different ways, but never, ever use core curriculum time. I mean, that Lifewise certainly does not want to pull from those subjects that are core curriculum and shorten that time in any way whatsoever. So trying to find a rotation that works in electives and along those lines is what they try to stick to. Each class is designed to be about 40 to 45 minutes, so the ideal situation is that your Lifewise location would be within walking distance of the school building. That is the, that's what they always try to shoot for, that's what they always try to reach, and there are certain situations where there's a short transport that might be required through a van or a bus, but again, that's completely provided by Lifewise, no school resources are used for that, and any driver is going to be certified in every area they need to be to transport children in a situation like that. I would just say, at least from here at Martin County, there's a steering committee that exists right now to try to make Lifewise a reality within our county, and some of the groundwork we've already done. We do have locations within walking distance of, I think, almost every elementary school except one, and that is South Creek Elementary, but there is Gold Point Church of Christ, which is just one mile away from that school location, so that would be a very short drive to be able to get them there and back. Most of the locations are obviously churches who we've talked with and are excited about hosting this, making their building a location where these groups can meet. But in Jamesville, for Jamesville Elementary, the fire department was also interested in providing their facility. So again, for Williamson Primary, E.J. Hayes, Rogers Elementary, South Creek, and Jamesville, we've been in discussions for locations there that are either within walking distance or a drive that's less than a mile. So we've got some good options there, as far as that's concerned. That is, like I said, I know y'all have a long meeting, so I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but just wanted to give you some of that information. You've got some information there in the handouts. I would encourage you, if you get a chance, at lifewise.org, they've got a video page, and there's just some really great testimonials from superintendents, teachers, parents, and students about the impact that Lifewise has had on their school district, on their communities, just a positive difference that it has made. So if you do get a chance to look at some of that, I'd encourage you to check that out. Obviously, I want to open it up, any questions that you might have, maybe you've had a chance to already look over some of the material, but if I can try to answer it, I will.
Any questions?
Just one clarification. Is the target population first through fifth grade?
Thank you, I forgot to mention that. So yes, the target, and our steering committee, our goal would be, we'd love to provide it for every elementary school, first through fifth grade. We'd love to start with that, if it were approved. Now, obviously, that's dependent on how quickly you can get a program director and the teachers required to meet that need across that many schools. That would be our goal, to do that. But if it were the case where we got started and it looked like we only had enough to maybe do a couple of schools, maybe we could think about sort of a pilot program with a few schools, with the goal and intention of, hey, while we start these, we're working on getting other teachers in place to make it available to every elementary school. They have, since it began, it was designed for elementary school, but since then, they've had students who've gone first through fifth grade and done it every grade. When they got to sixth grade, they were like, "Hey, we love this. Can we keep going in middle school? Can we have this in high school?" And so they have extended to middle school and high school now as well. Obviously, that would be a long-term goal, but yeah, so it is available for all grades. But that would be our goal, is first through fifth grade.
Okay, thank you.
To begin. I know that was a very long answer.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion, or do you need more information or more time?
If they have, since it began...
It's just a delay.
It's the 10-second delay.
Yeah.
First through fifth grade, and then every grade. When they got to sixth grade...
Ms. Gail?
You said needs more time.
I said more time. Does Ms. Gail have her hand up?
She has a question. Ms. Gail has a question.
Okay. Gail? Ms. Cargill?
But yeah, so it is available for all grades, but that would be our focus. Will every student be given a paper that's all decided?
She asked if every student will be given a paper sent home through the school system to decide, so if you could talk a little bit about how we're gonna...
Sure. Yeah, as far as making the community aware, it's, we obviously want to do whatever is going to make the principal and administration the most comfortable as to how that's done. Primarily, the way a community has learned about Lifewise, at least the programs that have existed so far, it's been through advertisement outside of the school system. So you would do, there would be a direct mail campaign, a social media campaign. Obviously, the best way is just through word of mouth of, you know, maybe students who begin to participate, and they enjoy it, and tell a friend about it type thing. That's generally the way it's done. There have been some schools where, let's say, the school sends home information about a local rec league for sports, or sends flyers about other things like that. If they were comfortable about including a Lifewise flyer, just to make families aware of the option, they have done that before. But again, that's at the comfort level of the principal and the decision-makers within the school district.
Do you all have an emergency management team or plan in place?
So, emergency management, like for what kind of scenario or situation?
In case something happened while they're off campus, while they're with you guys.
Okay, yeah, so that, I think that would kind of fall under where, whether it was a behavioral issue, or like a, maybe like an allergic reaction, or a medical issue, something like that. They do have a policy for that. I don't have the exact procedure of how they handle it, but they do have policies in place of how they handle emergency situations to that degree. I could certainly get that information for you.
What's the board's pleasure?
Are we gonna try to start it next year?
Are we gonna try to start it next year?
Yes.
Yes, that would...
We'd love to work towards that goal. If it were a situation where you, as the board, felt, "We want to see it available to all elementary schools," and wait until, wait to start it until that's an option, or if you're okay with a few pilot programs. Again, a lot of that depends on how quickly we could get teachers interviewed, hired, in place. You know, I'm putting my hope and trust and faith that God will provide those needs and have us ready to go, but obviously, that's reality.
Can it be started next school year?
Yes. If the board votes to pass this, it can be started next school year if Lifewise is able to establish their program coordinator, their teachers. They have not taken that next step to hire staff, of course, because they have to have the board's vote first to move forward.
We can't take that next step of beginning the interview process the way Lifewise designs it. We can't take the next step of interviewing program director and teachers until approval is given by the school district. We do have three applications in for program director at this time.
I make a motion that we move forward with it and try to get it started for the coming school year.
All right, we have a motion and a second to try to get started with Lifewise, move forward to get it started as soon as possible, hopefully in the fall. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Did Ms. Gail vote? You got Ms. Gail?
Ms. Gail, would you vote? Ms. Gail, would you vote?
And I second the motion.
Okay.
She voted yes, there was two no's.
Mr. Harold and Ms. Mason were no's. Everybody else was a yes.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. All right. Next item's field trip request. Andrea Lilly? Evening.
We have several field trip requests for you at this time. First one is a preapproval was done on this one for FCC LA trip to Greensboro, North Carolina for state training session, and that was on 5/17 to 5/19. The second request is for the Riverside Middle School Band, and they would like to attend Kings Dominion on 5/25, leaving at 8:00 a.m. in the morning and returning at 10:00 p.m. at night. And that is in Virginia. The third trip is for the STEM Mavericks team to attend ECU Summer Program and Competition, and that is on 6/16, and it runs through 6/21. And they will attend that summer camp for those students. And then we have the FFA Club, and they would be attending a meeting and convention at the Raleigh Convention Center on 6/25 through 6/27. And our final request is for the FCC LA Seattle/Washington trip, and that is for a national competition, and that is on 6/28 to 7/4. And I'd like to request approval for the field trips.
We'll get a motion.
Move to approve the field trip request.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the field trip request. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, K-5 math curriculum adoption. Kim Lilly?
I'd like to go over some things tonight of our K-5 curriculum adoption of math. This is a five-year adoption. First of all, I'd like to introduce Desiree Harris. She's one of our instructional coaches. She's been a very valued asset to this team through our exploration, as well as all the behind-the-scenes pieces as well. Can you click that, Doug, please? So in March, we had a couple district leaders. We had an instructional coach, we had an administrator, and we had a couple teachers. They went to NCAT for a four-day session, a really intense math PD, and those leaders that week developed a mathematical definition vision for our district. So this right here is one of the definitions that they created over those four days. When they came back, one of our instructional coaches that went, she also has really worked with a few teachers on leading some math talks in their classroom, so starting that process of having more student discourse. But this is the definition that they kind of came up with that we want to see in our classrooms around mathematics. Uh, but this is the definition that they kind of came up with that we want to see in our classrooms around mathematics. Um, this is our adoption timeline. We had some discussions early on last summer, as well as in the fall, about the math adoption process, how it looked, very similar to the ELA adoption process that we've already spoken about previously. Um, we also did some high-level research overview. Um, they looked at four different math curriculum options. Um, we had vendor presentations. Then, um, we brought the teachers back also for, um, voting, as well as presenting to you to let you know, um, what they've narrowed it down to. These are teacher leaders, and as you can see, we had grade representation, um, across all the grade levels. We had schools all represented as well. Now, you'll notice EJ Hayes had less representation, just because some of theirs were also on the science adoption we also had going on as well. So we didn't want to pull the teachers out of the classroom too much, so they, they had to kind of rotate which role they participated in.
So before we started, um, our journey through exploration of all of our curriculums, we wanted to build our teachers' knowledge first by doing a lot, a very intensive day of, um, research-based exploration within mathematical standards. Um, we wanted to make sure that our teachers were knowledgeable in the effective math practices, um, discourse levels, that they did some reflections on their math knowledge, as well as in the classroom, based upon our research, so that they would get a scope and sequence of kind of where their knowledge is with math. We also studied some essential elements of mathematical success, and also understanding what rigorous curriculum is before we went into vetting these, um, these different curriculums. We wanted them to also understand what rigor in the math classroom looked like, and this is a, a very good definition of what that would look like. Um, it's more or less a deeper understanding of concepts within math and not in isolated facts or, or methods. So that was also a part of our research, or studying the research and the exploration with our teachers, was just to give them a better understanding. What is rigor? What does that look like in our math classroom, and how it promotes retention within our students with, um, math concepts? So here are what our, um, our teachers studied as we were looking into our, our rubric, or these mathematical teaching practices. We did a lot of research on this, but we also had our teachers break up, break out into breakout groups, and understanding what do these mean, what do they look like in your classroom, and what does that mean for the teacher, and what they're doing in the classroom. There we go. Okay. Um, here's also the NC2ML, their definition of what high-quality math instruction would look like in classrooms. It's more collaborative efforts with our students, engagement with our students. Our students are doing a lot of the work in the classrooms. Our teachers are more of the facilitators, and they are guiding our students in what that would look like, and not necessarily telling them, getting them on the pathway of understanding what those mathematical discourses look like, and understanding the concepts within math.
So as the previous, um, one of the slides showed, all the different, um, K-5 teacher leaders that were part of this process, um, we also had an AP intern who is very, um, has a very love of math, of passionate about math. So, um, that, um, AP intern also participated, as well as our, our three other instructional coaches participated as well. Um, like I said, they explored the resources, they looked at the curriculum, they looked at the connection to the standards, they looked at the alignment, um, and then also the rigor, um, within the curriculum. And there they are exploring. And they had a very intense, um, few days of really looking at the research, and then really over those multiple four or five days of really looking at all those resources. They had a good, um, good amount of time to explore. This right here is just the rubric that they used to look for those components, that they wanted to see, that we wanted to make sure was in a solid curriculum. Um, within this rubric, they also provided the evidence. So, you know, yes, I might say I scored it a, a zero, one, or two, but what was the evidence? Where was that piece of the rubric in the curriculum? So they had a lot of, um, um, time to really look and find it, and then talk amongst their colleagues where those pieces were. So upon, um, completion of this, um, process, we set the vote out to all teachers. So that means even the teachers who were not on the actual adoption committee, all teachers voted, and we had three choices that came up out of the four, and the top choice, you can see there is Bridges. So Bridges Math is a K-5 math curriculum, and you can see that out of the votes were received, um, seventy-two point four percent of teachers voted for this math, um, option. Okay?
So with this, um, with this curriculum, the materials that will, we will get with these, or will get with this curriculum, it's going to enhance our deeper understanding of the concepts. Um, we need manipulatives for our students to have a more conceptual understanding of math, not just the procedures and the algorithms that go along with it, but also understanding how is it used in the real world, and be, basic understanding and building upon that, so students can move into those application parts of, um, mathematics. So each grade level will have similar, and they will have different materials that will come with the curriculum that will enhance their learning and better understanding the concepts within it. So this is just the lesson framework of what Bridges has for us. It's moving towards more student thinking and teacher facilitator. Um, the more students do engage with the materials and not just the procedures, the more the, the concepts will stick, and will have more retention with, um, with mathematics. But the framework that we have here is the problem and investigation. It's a whole group activity. Students are individually working, then they're working with partners, they're collaborating. There's a lot of collaboration within understanding strategies and how to solve mathematical problems, thinking about math, and not just paper to pencil, doing the math. It's really, really engaging in that discourse. Um, and then they'll move into what they call workplaces, which are just centers where you solve the materials, um, the pictures. Those will be in the stations so that students are able to apply what they have learned, use the materials, and actually act out and do what is being asked of them in those concepts as well. They also have a piece called Number Corner. Number Corner builds our students' number sense, and really understanding what are numbers, how do numbers work, where we see them, what we do with them. Um, it is not, it builds upon what our students are learning within the grade level, but it also goes back in concepts as students are building their knowledge as they go. Even in Number Corner, sometimes they'll see some things previously where, when they get into their units of study in their problem and investigation, they already have experiences through those Number Corners to apply it. So it's continuously spiraling, it's continuously building, where our students are constantly being involved in math conceptual thinking.
And one thing about Bridges, too, is that we looked at the core curriculum. Um, the one really awesome benefit, too, is that they actually have an intervention part of Bridges, um, and that's included when we talk about that in the quote. Um, but they, so that will support our tier-two and tier-three learners as well, um, and that's something that's kind of been greatly missing across the state, really in general, is just how do we intervene with math, um, when we have math, um, when we have deficits. So, um, we're pleased that we actually will be able to address the core, as well as students who need intervention. Um, there's a Set One and a Set Two that will also help us intervene in some of those areas, so. Um, this right here are just four snapshots, um, of some teachers that made a comment. Um, when they voted, they had to explain what was their reason, why they were choosing, um, which option they chose. And these are just four that were chosen, um, just pulled out of that survey. Um, so the highlight is that a lot of the teachers mentioned the CRA model. Um, they talked about the engagement of the mathematical reasoning, they talked about the productive struggle that students will, will have to really deepen their, um, problem-solving skills as well. Um, number sense, of course, the rigor, and then really a high emphasis on student-led discussion, um, where the teacher kind of steps back a little bit, and it might be a little bit out of their comfort zone to get used to, but really letting the kids have a lot more time there. Then we go into the discourse piece, and again, that's fostering that collaboration within the classroom, really focusing on those instructional routines. Um, and then students move kind of from working on independent tasks, then they move into kind of the pairing up with a, a student, a peer, then they move into some small group, before they even come kind of to the whole class to discuss how they came up with those answers. So I think when I went to school, we started whole class, and the teacher kind of taught the lesson. So this has kind of flipped a little bit, where the kids have that time to really explore it, um, before they kind of come together. Um, one thing that's also great is that you might have students over here that solve the problem one way, another group of students over here who solve it another way, and they both might be the right way. It's just a different strategy, different method. So there's a lot of ways that other students can benefit from hearing their peers and having them explain how they solve problems. All right, so our plan for implementation, we know in order to have a successful curriculum, we need to think about how are we implementing, how are we going to roll out the support? So this summer, we've got a couple people who are volunteering to help, um, us prepare some of the materials when they arrive. Part of it is, we've got to look at pulling up the teacher resources before they have the training, because we had a lot of teachers say, hey, when this comes in, it's historically, things have kind of come in later, and they want to make sure they have time to look at things. Also, as Desiree mentioned, the play, no, hold on, always the workplaces, um, the stations, um, that's some prep that we're gonna have to do, to make sure with the units that we can prepare some of those, so teachers will be ready, um, to start like Unit One. So we have that in plan, in our plan. Also, we're gonna do pacing development July and August with those teacher leaders that are able to come in. Over the summer, the teachers will have an opportunity to do a ninety-minute PD course on their own to kind of front-load that knowledge before they do the training with us in August. Okay? And then, of course, during the school year, we'll have some other PD options, as well as some possible visits to other schools. Um, this year, we did take some of our BTs to some observation, or to some schools, and we actually saw Bridges in action at a, um, K-one school. Um, so we, we saw some really awesome things there, so. I'm gonna let Andre Lilly come on up.
Okay, so the quote that you have in your packet was for three hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and eighty-seven cents. This was for five years of Bridges materials. So this would complete our purchase, we wouldn't have to pay any more materials for five years. We did go back and ask them to take out the Home Connections, which you'll see, um, on that invoice as a five-pack, and the reason we did that is because it's basically homework sheets, and if the teachers want those, it's online, and they can print them if they would like them. So this is a book that we're just taking off. And if we take that off, including intervention kits and everything, we're down to three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. And so tonight, we are asking for approval of Bridges K-through-five math curriculum for five years at three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is that actual math books?
This...
The students will have a workbook.
Students will have a workbook.
A workbook, but not a math book?
Everything's in it for five years. So they'll get one every year. They're consumables.
But, um, and textbooks are a little different now. Is, are the textbook materials actually in the workbook? I think is what he's asking. So, where, textbooks now, a lot of them have moved to consumable. Uh, the, the whole book is consumable? So the textbook, I want to make sure I'm saying this right, the textbook will be printed inside the workbook. So you go through the lesson, and then the work will follow that. So it's not the old-school consumables that only had the work. The textbook is in front of the consumable.
One, one of the reasons I was asking, because shipping on this is over twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And, I mean, how, how many students do we have, and, I mean, what does that come to per book? I mean, you could probably ship it US mail cheaper than that.
Yeah. I asked the very question, um, even today. Yes, I did. And, um, they said that they're s- flat eight percent, so it's eight percent of the purchase is shipping, and that's how they do it. They say they're nonprofit, and I tried to negotiate.
Where, where's the company out of?
Salem, Oregon.
Oregon.
So that was my thought, we could pick it up.
Yeah, and that is something we can definitely explore. That is still an option. That is still an option that we can explore. Uh, that, uh, that was an issue that we had as well, um, to the point that she was on the phone with them all day today, um, and we weren't able to get that to budge. Um, but our teachers believed in it, to the point, we were still talking about this. Our teachers believe in this, and this is what they want. Um, so even if we need to rent a U-Haul and let's go pick it up, we at least wanted to bring the cost to the board as the maximum cost.
Mrs. Scott can go pick it up.
I'm, I'm sorry. I mean, I, again, I just saw the twenty-some thousand dollars in shipping, and I'm going, that's ridiculous.
I feel the same way.
We agree.
I one-hundred percent agree.
I'd do it for ten.
And board, that is something we absolutely will explore. Um, this would be the maximum cost, and we, we will absolutely explore it. Seriously, if we could, look at other options to, to pick it up. But in order to get it here on time and get the training started, we did want to present the maximum cost and decided to, to at least move forward with that as far as the approval of the materials.
I make a motion that we accept it, but continue to look into this shipping thing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the bid, but to continue to look, look into reducing the shipping cost. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is the six-eight math curriculum adoption. Andrea Lilly and Gwen Houston.
Good evening. I'm Gwen Houston. I'm one of the six-through-twelve instructional coaches. So much of what you're gonna see is some of the same language that, uh, Kim and Desiree presented, because we are vertically aligning with the instructional piece, especially in the core subjects. So when I look here... We have three purp-, uh, purposes and goals, um, the same statement. We're looking for creating a pathway for highly equitable mathematical experiences for all of our learners. So when we started looking at the six-through-eight curriculum, we wanted something that aligned with kind of where they were coming from with the K-5, and where we already are at the high school level. So we wanted something that had on hands-on opportunities, had a lot of mobility and student-led opportunities, and through doing that, we have found great success at the high school level, and we are intending, we're hoping to see the same, especially with the innovative middle school piece coming into place. A lot of those same concepts and goals are present in this curriculum to do that. Um, some goals for what, uh, Martin County math instruction should be, we want high-quality math instruction. We want a collaborative environment. We want a room of discourse. We want to have a good understanding of what we're doing mathematically, and we are seeing the strides that we're making at the high school, and if we can start early on, especially with the K-5 implementation of Bridges, um, the envision aligns with that. So here, the same understanding with rigor. Um, so when you're looking at things, sometimes you have to be careful. Rigor is not always so hard, but we want things that are relevant to our students, and also that make them socially aware and global, as well as local citizens. So with the, um, innovative middle school piece coming to the table as well, this curriculum provides some issues that align with the CTE piece with sustainability and other, um, problems that are socially prevalent in our middle school, from food scarcity, sustainability, and all of these things are integrated into this, and you can do it as an extension, or it's part of your foundational piece that you could do with instruction. The rigor is there. Um, it is easy to differentiate for all those different levels as well. So you'll also notice here, the teacher's role in a math room, um, in a math classroom. These are your aid practices that are through the North, um, the National Math Teaching Standards, as well as... So you'll notice that it's a lot of, you're creating a learning environment that is very different from the way most of us learnt math even ten to fifteen years ago. This is not a sit-and-get anymore. It is a task and problem-based piece where you're exploring. Um, we have found that when you do this, it is a different-looking classroom, and the instructional material and curriculum looks a little different than what it has in the past. material and curriculum looks a little different than what it has in the past. Also, your student role in the math classroom, they should see some math practical practices also, they should be making sense of their problems, they should learn how to reason logically and quantitatively, they should be able to defend their procedure, even if it's incorrect, sometimes you're going to learn more on that than you would of just getting the answer. They should be able to model with mathematics, use the appropriate tools, attend to precision, and look for patterns. So these are big pieces that this curriculum that we're bringing to the board tonight encompasses. So we took the middle school curriculum, we started off with three illustrative math, which is also known as IAM, and Envision, and then Eureka. So my middle school people, unlike the elementary, there's not twenty-five, thirty teachers, all of my middle school people came, along with exceptional children, I had some admin present, and also a variety of other, an interventionist was there to look at, we're looking at our whole student body, not just your regular, and so we had a lot of input. We were here for about six hours, we went through all of these instructional opportunities here, we did some hands-on activities. So you'll notice here, they were paired off initially by grade, because I do have some teachers that are shared between grade levels, people rotated around. So we used the same rubric, because once again, we're trying to vertically align. This was our voting, we were, the majority was at Envision. And here is our lesson framework here, it is a problem-based experience where you explore it, it promotes discourse because you need to explain it, it is relevant, it addresses the needs of various learning styles, it's visual auditory, a lot of hands-on activities, it is adaptive, it does have digital and print resources, there's a plethora of variety of assessments, and it also allows for our teachers to be proactive and sort of reactive in instruction. In our proposal, we are getting a diagnostic, which was, is required, we also have a pathway that's adaptive, that all fields back into this one dashboard, that all the teachers will have what's happening in the classroom in real-time versus where they are off the diagnostic. So that small group instruction that we are promoting here in Martin County, it is made easier because the resources are there, and it's real-time, as a student progresses, then it changes, and it's, it's relatively one of the easiest transitions you'll see. Any questions or comments? I will say, I have talked to some other districts that have purchased this, and they will tell you, one of the things they had, they said teachers especially had lots of resources, and it made their instructional easier, because there are, it is a good mix of instruction, there is a consumable, it's more done as a module, so you have the lesson, first of all, you have a problem that is relatable to the student in middle school in that area, and then you have a, it's an explorer, then you have a lesson, then you come back and you have a debrief, so it's lots of moving pieces, it models the I-do, you-do, we-do model as well, it provides a huge plethora of resources, as well as data-driven pieces that are there, that go along with what we're currently using with Mastery Connect.
So our quote for this is a three-year quote for Envision for six-eight math, and our total on that quote came to one hundred and eighteen thousand, five oh five seventy-four. And this, if you'll notice, there's some areas that were one-hundred percent discounted, we went back and asked for them to reduce the price on some things, and so that's where they came in and gave us our discount through those areas. So we're asking for approval of this quote tonight for six-eight math, and the reason it's three years and not five years is because our standards change in three years, and so we don't want to go into something when our standards change.
Need to approve?
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the six-eight math curriculum adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the six-twelve ELA curriculum adoption, Andrea Lilly and Gwen Houston again.
So here we, the other coach, Wendy Dixon, she supervised this, well, managed, facilitated the six-through-twelve. So here, this is her timeline, in the summer, they had, they started the process, February through March, they started meeting, they started pulling samples, they started vetting the curriculum itself, and now, we have voted, we have had teachers come in, they've vetted the materials themselves, they voted, and here we are now at the board asking for this curriculum. So this is her teachers from the middle school into high school. So here they are, when they are looking, when they were looking at their ELA curriculum, they allot, they made sure it was standard aligned, that it matched up to the literacy instructional standards and instructional practices in the ELA classroom, and there's a rubric also attached. This curriculum and the processes, when they were looking at it, we wanted to make sure that was mirroring the instructional practices and strategies that we're bringing to the table and encouraging through our coaching. And as a result, we are now, HMH is where the sta-, the teachers voted, basically a two-to-one, and same thing here, that was for the middle school, and this is their top choice. It offers high-quality, effective language arts instruction, it is research-based, it is aligned to NC standards, it is coherent, it coherent and rigorous curriculum, it has both digital and print resources, and it provides differentiation, differentiation and support for all of our students, it is high-quality complex text with appropriate Lexile levels, and we know in the past that has been some issues we have seen, so we're trying to horn in on pieces that address that, and also, it goes back, it also integrates grammar and writing through writable. Some other districts here, Green and Nash County, you'll notice, one of the challenges with the sheer amount of resources was a bit overwhelming for the teachers, they need time and intentionality to explore. There's so many resources here and so many options, you have to really narrow it down. The other one, we do realize that one county in Green County had some issues, that was due to not a true initial implementation plan, but we have those things in place for some pacing and curriculum through the summer. You're looking at the summer, you're doing pacing guide and unit planning common assessments, we have some professional development that was included, and then there is coaching throughout the year for the first year of implementation as well.
Doug, can you back out to the other one? Okay, so this, this quote for HMH is very intense and long. So it basically, it's broken down by school, and so each school was given a price, and it was for a print version for five years, with a two-year digital version. And the reason for that is we can only pay with ester funds for two years. And so then we went back, and we have another quote in there for year two, years three, four, and five, and we also have our into literature and writables quote, which is some more materials that came along with that, and also a PD that we requested for the first year implementation. And so altogether, we have, we're at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and this is for a five-year, and it's grade six-through-twelve ELA. And this particular one was pretty heavily discounted as well. I'd like to ask for approval for the six-twelve curriculum, five-year purchase.
So nice.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the ELA curriculum adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
School nutrition financial report, Mr. Barber.
Good to see everyone. So today, we're going to go over some information about where we're at financially during the school year, as well as some reminders about the school nutrition program. So as a reminder, the school nutrition program is an enterprise operation, and of course, this means that this program is self-sustaining, our revenues have got to match our expenses to continue operation. For this fiscal year, we're operating under a two-point-nine million dollar budget, eight cafeterias, as well as we're feeding the innovation campus, that's, that's going very, very well. As of five thirteen twenty-four, we had two thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight students that we were serving, and we have thirty-four employees, that includes one director, one administrative assistant, eight managers, and twenty-four school nutrition assistants. So to get into the financial side of things now, so this school year, we appropriated six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars with the fund balance, and as we know, that means that we're expected to have to utilize that fund balance that we have based on the expenses of the program. Now, I will say this, before Ms. Tilly left, she and I sat down, and we did err on the side of, of caution, this is a, this is the, and I don't want to say extreme, but definitely a safe, safe bet of, in a worst-case scenario of expenses. Now, this appropriation of fund balance is due to the extreme increase in labor costs and food costs since the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, essentially since COVID. So let's do some comparisons, so a little bit of a cost analysis. So let's look at labor first. During the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, our school nutrition assistants were making around eleven dollars and fifty cent an hour, on average. Twenty-three, twenty-four, they're making fifteen, sixty. We're talking about a thirty-six percent increase in labor costs. Our managers, thirteen dollars an hour approximately in twenty-one, twenty-two, now eighteen seventy-two, a forty-four percent increase in labor cost, excuse me, labor cost. Now, these figures do not include the cost of FICA and retirement, so that fifteen, sixty goes to twenty-seventy with benefits, that eighteen seventy-two goes to twenty-four eighty-four. And I want to be completely clear, these individuals worked very hard, and they deserve that, they deserve that, that increase in pay, and we, and we need that staff to be there to continue to serve our kids. Let's look at food. Now, when we see, when we watch the news, you know, you see eight, ten, twelve percent inflation, is, is what we hear in the news, right, for food supplies, normal cost of living. So what I did is I compared our twenty-one, twenty-two school bid to twenty-three, twenty-four school bid, and I, I didn't select these on purpose, I went through and I just picked some staple items out of our bid and did a, a small cost analysis. A sausage biscuit, a fan favorite for our students for breakfast, twenty-one, twenty-two, forty-seven cent per serving, now fifty-one cent per serving, or fifty-one cent per serving, that's an eight percent increase in food cost. Chicken nugget, seventy-six to eighty-six, thirteen percent increase in food cost. Pizza, forty-four cent to fifty-two cent, eighteen percent increase in food cost. A packet of barbecue sauce, eight cent to ten cent, twenty-five percent increase. Milk, twenty-four cent to thirty-one cent, twenty-nine percent increase. We're getting a little bit further away from that eight, ten, twelve, if you see what I'm saying. French fries, another fan favorite in the school nutrition world, nine cent to thirteen cent per serving, that's a thirty-one percent increase in food cost. A hamburger bun, fourteen cent to twenty cent, a forty-three percent increase in food cost. Orange juice, twelve cent for a four-inch carton to nineteen cent, a fifty-eight percent increase in food cost. Matched with that, in the twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the federal government gave us a four-dollar and fifty-six meal reimbursement per lunch meal that we served. However, in twenty-two, twenty-four, they decided to drop that meal reimbursement to four dollars and thirty-five cent. That's a loss of twenty-one cent per lunch meal that we serve throughout our school year. So what I did is I based it on last year's participation numbers, we're, we're projecting to do about the same. That twenty-one cent per lunch meal will come to about a sixty-nine thousand dollar loss in revenue, due to that federal reimbursement rate decrease. So right now, as of April twenty twenty-four, I'm glad to say that we won't touch that six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of fund, fund balance that was allocated. That's a great thing. However, we're currently operating at a loss of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Current projections indicate that the school nutrition program will operate at a total loss of, give or take, one hundred and thirty thousand. Now, I know the information that Ms. Scott provided you in your handouts earlier, that figure was around a hundred and ninety. We recently received word that we got the fourth and final distribution of supply chain assistance grants, about sixty-six thousand dollars. So I did take that into consideration, that's why you'll see that change of plus or minus a hundred thousand. So where do we go from here? As I stated, these programs theoretically are supposed to be self-sustaining. So what's the plan? And our plan is to continue a self-sustaining program, but that is going to take changes, as we know. So some of the changes that we're going to start with are menu changes. So the school nutrition program during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, are going to be moving to one entree option. So what that will do is that will help with accuracy in ordering, accuracy in food preparation, decreasing food waste, which in turn will lower food costs. That planned menu that we're going to be serving is based on fan favorites, as I stated, items that our kids really, really enjoy seeing on our menu, we've gone through past production records and participation data, and we really dialed in to see what do our kids enjoy, so the ones that we do serve, the kids will be excited about still. However, those are also items that are cost-efficient to our program. Well, of course, we'll closely monitor participation data, and we'll make changes, we'll pivot where necessary, if we need to go for some different routes, some different entrees, we can do that as well. But our, our plan is to go with one entree option during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We will continue with two fruit options, two vegetable options, and milk, of course. By doing that, these will support students that don't eat the menu entree due to dietary or religious preference, I want, I want to put emphasis on preference. And we will meet federal regulations and complete with an offer versus serve when doing that. Entree substitutions will continue to be made for dietary restrictions, food allergies, food intolerances. So if a student has an allergy to an entree that we're serving, we, of course, will make a substitution for that child, but for a preference, it's just not feasible to make those meal substitutions. So those students can, can utilize the two fruits, the two vegetables. We're not blazing the trail here on board. Washington County, Hertford County, Hyde County, and Terrell County are already moving, and have already moved, excuse me, to these types of menus, because they're facing the same hardships that we are, the financial hardships. This menu will also allow us to alleviate labor costs. So in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we were operating with thirty-six school nutrition employees. Twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're actually operating with thirty-four school nutrition employees. And next year, when people leave, we have a couple who have resigned, we're going to operate with thirty-two, again, doing our best to cut labor cost. You hear from DPI that in the school nutrition programs, there's two things that you can control in school nutrition, it's labor and it's food, and that's what we're doing to try to alleviate these financial hardships. I've talked to our staff, they know that they're going to be shorter staff next year, but they also know the gravity of what we're facing and the importance of sustaining this program. As I stated, simplified menu options will be able to decrease labor hours needed for day-to-day operations, ultimately decreasing those labor costs. Changes, of course, will come as employees leave or retire, and there will not be layoffs for these changes, I, I want to be completely clear with that. Further in the plan, we're going to continue to utilize USDA commodities. So our initial allotment for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year was a little over a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I've become really, really good friends with Mr. David Usher with the USDA, I talk to him quite a bit. So by communicating with him, reaching out to the USDA, we were actually able to bring in an additional fifty-one thousand, almost fifty-two thousand dollars in USDA commodities that act strictly as revenue for our program, there are no costs to the program, they're items that are great quality, that we can bring in and lower our food costs. We're going to continue to do that. Every time I call, he sees me on caller ID, he says, how's it going, Thomas, what do you need, what do you need today? They work really, really closely with us, if they have stuff out there that schools don't need, or extra shipments from, from local producers in North Carolina, they're sending it our way, so we appreciate the partnership with the USDA. We're going to continue that partnership in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to alleviate those food costs as well. We'll continue to utilize- We'll continue to utilize, utilize grant opportunities. Twenty three, in twenty two, twenty three, we were awarded around fifty four thousand dollars for the equipment assistance grant. Um, South Creek, South Creek Elementary and EJ Hayes were able to benefit for some, for some new, with some new equipment. We have applied for that grant again, um, we've applied for a little over forty seven thousand dollars. The schools below there, you will see, we are, we're looking to get some new equipment for them as well. And we're not just buying things sporadically, with the help of the maintenance department and their, their guys, they're very knowledgeable about the equipment that we have. We've gone through our schools and we have, we've created a proactive plan for updating equipment. So we're not just spending money all over the place. We know when things need to be replaced. So again, this is going to alleviate emergency purchases for any equipment that may go down or need repair. We'll continue to increase revenues, this is a big part of the plan. In twenty one twenty two, we brought in fourteen thousand dollars of à la carte sales. Now, à la carte sales, as we know, are things that we sell additionally, um, potato chips, ice cream. Um, the kids really, really enjoy the ice cream. Twenty two, twenty three, we brought that up to fifty five thousand. This year, we're looking to break sixty thousand à la carte sales. We'll continue to bring in items that the kids enjoy, that's extra revenue for the program. Jump all over the place, sorry guys. Will you go back to community eligibility provision? Thank you, Dr. So on April second, we were certified for the community eligibility provision, so this is a great thing for our district. All students will continue to eat at no charge for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Um, but I do want to talk about the gravity of this program and why it's so important that we do remain self-sustainable. Out of those, out of the two thousand six hundred ninety eight students that we serve, eighteen hundred and sixty six were directly certified to the Department of Social Services during this process. What that means is this translates to eighteen hundred and sixty six students in Martin County schools that would fall into the category of, category of food insecurity. So this program remaining sustainable is a very, very important aspect of Martin County schools. So there's some norms in school nutrition. There's a lot of districts in school nutrition that operate in the red annually. There's a lot of districts around us in the northeastern part of North Carolina that operate in the red annually. That is not where we want to head. With these changes, our goal is to minimize the financial burden that the school nutrition program is facing. And in turn, we can use the funds that Martin County schools has to benefit from great curriculum resources, like Ms. Andrea Lilly and, and, and her team presented tonight, Ms. Kimlany presented tonight. So our, our goal is to utilize the funds that Martin County schools has for the promotion, the educational advancement of our students. So we're making these changes so that those funds can be pushed straight, strictly to that. I didn't miss one, sorry. Summer feeding program. So let's talk about the summer feeding program for, um, for a moment. So in summer twenty twenty three, summer feeding program, that's a service, but it is always a loss of money. It is what it is, that's the case. Um, in summer twenty four, we're looking to lose around eight thousand dollars of a loss for summer feeding. So what are we going to do, again, to minimize that loss? So due to, due to the rural area that we operate in, we serve very, very few walk-ins, walk-in students, walk-in meals. South Creek is very, very hard to get to. EJ Hayes is a little bit better, we have a, a, a community right, right there, but again, very few walk-ins. The majority of meals that we feed are with summer learning programs, as well as community programs, WC Chance, our Kids Excel that has recently joined us. Those programs, those summer learning programs have funds to support meal service. Now, that, that's not saying that we don't want to serve those students meals, but what we're saying is that it is important that we're going to maximize the meals that we serve by minimizing the loss of revenue. And by doing that, we're going to operate summer feeding this year on days that our Martin County schools programs, learning programs are in, or re-to-achieve, or retesting, or credit recovery, as well as those community programs. So we're really, really dialing in on when we're serving, we're still going to be feeding twenty three days over the course of summer. Um, as Dr. White said, that is students of, of, of all ages, regulation states ages zero to eighteen specifically. Those, those students can come in and receive those meals. And board, I know, I'm sorry, I was jumping all over the place. Um, that's how many meals that we've served this school year, a hundred and fifty thousand, basically, excuse me, almost a hundred and fifty thousand breakfast meals right at, um, almost two hundred and seventy nine thousand lunch meals. So I stress the gra, the gravity of this program in remaining self, self-sufficient and self-sustaining. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I feel like we have a good plan, there are some big changes. But I think these are the right changes that need to be made to continue to support our students.
Mr. Barber, I have two questions. Um, the first one is, it seems like less than a year ago, we were hearing from the students, it was a lot of social media about food, you know, about lunch and the quality or lack of. So now we are limiting the choices. Are you prepared, I mean, I, I know you're saying you offer popular items, but do you know what I'm talking about?
I understand, Ms. Purvis. Um, and sadly, we live in a world of social media where, where a negative, a negative post is shared a thousand times and a positive post is, is shared ten times. I, I don't think that the, the actual idea and the actual conception of the school nutrition program is shared by the few individuals who were sharing negative, um, ideas or, 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 or negative images about the school nutrition program. That, that's a, that's an interesting question to answer, I will say this, Ms. Purvis. This program supports a lot of students, a lot of students that don't have food at home in their cabinets. And we have got to make, in our, in our positions, we've got to make some tough decisions in what's for the greater good of, of our students in the student body of Martin County schools. Will there be some, some negativity at first? Absolutely, there, there will be that. But what we have to do is when we lay our head on the pillow at night, and we know that we're doing the best for the betterment of Martin County school students, which is sustaining a program that feeds, as we saw, eighteen hundred and sixty six students that are food insecure, I feel like, I feel like that speaks for itself, and that speak, that holds the weight that, that will continue to carry Martin County schools as, as we are.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I didn't answer your question.
No, you, I mean, and I guess it's something just to think about, it's more to me of a public relations.
I agree.
Which leads to my second question, which you led into, is food insecurity. So then I'm hearing, okay, so we had, we got eighteen sixty six who are food insecure, but during the summer, we're going to cut out feeding on Friday, am I hearing right?
So the cutting out of feeding on Friday, on those days, Ms. Purvis, we feed very, very few students. Very few, and I can get you the data to, to show you that. Um, so we're operating at a cafeteria, we're losing money for a program that, again, that is already struggling financially due to the food, food cost increases, labor cost increases in our federal government dropping that rate. We're trying to support a program to continue longevity, to continue to feed our kids. Those days, those Fridays, we serve very, very few students. When there's a lot of those summer programs, on Fridays, they go on field trips. WC Chance is on a field trip on Fridays. Kids Excel generally takes field trips on Fridays. So you're talking about, we, we have, we have to weigh our options. Do we want to, again, create a financial hardship for, for ten meals? And then risk a sustainable life of, of a program in the future? You know, in, in my, in my mind, you're talking about, last year, we served summer feeding for thirty one days. So this, this year, we're going to serve it for twenty three days. So you're talking about eight days versus a full school year. A full school year, we serve approximately two hundred and seventy nine thousand meals compared to those, what, seven or eight days where we serve a hundred meals? And I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I guess maybe, and I'm, I'm thinking as you're talking, that perhaps we need to loop in other organizations besides the school system, because, because for me, I'm thinking of buddies in a backpack. So I'm thinking of kids who actually don't get meals Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, right? During the school day, and there in the summer, is it going to be even limited? And so perhaps, you know, there are organizations, not, not for you, but for all of us to consider. Um, because food insecurity is real, and the other part of that is, I don't know if location, when you say we're not serving, a certain population, you know, can they get to South Creek or whatever? So is that part of it also? But that's not something for you per se, but just looking at the most vulnerable population.
Yes, ma'am.
For me.
And Mr. Barber, help me with this. Um, most of the meals we're serving in the summer program are for other organization's summer programs.
That's correct.
How many people actually do we feed from that come, those walk-ins to the facilities? And what percentage of those meals are for other programs that are grant operated and actually receive money to operate within themselves?
So let's say if we're not, if, if Martin County schools' learning programs are not in session. And let's say that we're just supporting, um, Kids Excel or WC Chance, we're, we're providing meals for those students. Walk-ins at EJ Hayes, mind you, that's the, the only, let's be honest, that's the only really feasible place for walk-ins.
Yeah, because you're not walking in in Robinsonville, you're in town. You can't.
There was a group of four students.
Okay.
That walked into EJ Hayes. No students walked into South Creek Elementary School. And sadly, that's a battle that we face, we're in extremely, extremely rural area. It's not with the lack of trying. We try to operate a site of South Creek Elementary School to support the western part of the district. And of course, one in the eastern part of the district at EJ Hayes. Those programs are there. We, we try to support and feed as many kids as possible. But I do stress, we're talking about, we want to, we have got to remain sustainable, board.
Understood, thank you.
My pleasure. Um, we, and I, and I go a little bit deeper. Again, as I stated, there are districts around us who operate at a loss every single year. I was speaking to a, a director, I'm not, I, I won't name the county, they operated at a hundred thousand dollar loss, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar loss last year. And we know what happened with that loss. They were bailed out with local funds. Local funds that could be used to better the educational advancement of our kids. I can't stress enough the importance of a sustainable program. And board, I'm, I can't stand here tonight and tell you that with the financial hardships that, that we're facing, that we won't operate at a loss. But we have got to try to minimize the loss for future. We've, we're lucky enough that we have some money in fund balance currently. But if you continue to operate a loss, a hundred thousand dollars next year, a hundred and thirty this year, a hundred the next year, that fund balance will go away. And at what point do we have to say, we've got to make some very, very difficult changes? In my opinion, it's best that we make changes currently, and we be proactive and try to get ahead of that loss. These are not easy, easy changes, believe me. Any other questions? All right, it's good to talk to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Thank you.
Alternative Learning Program presentation, Andrea Lilly and Tracy Smith.
Tracy Smith and I wanted to just bring you an update on our alternative learning program and, um, just give you some updated information around the number of students that are there and, um, who are being successful and working towards graduation. And so our program, just remember that the program is not a separate school, as you know. It is just a program within, and it's housed within South Creek High School. However, it's functions as a program within Riverside High School. It's just in that building with the middle school currently. And all the testing for this alternative program goes back to Riverside High School. So the testing data from these students goes back to the testing data that you'll see with Riverside High School, as well as the graduation rate. These students, um, that we serve in the alternative learning program are at-risk students. And there's several different reasons why they might would be, um, in this program with us. Um, some circumstances increase, of these at-risk students are a failure that they don't want any other outcome, I'm sorry. They increase the risk of school failure or other unwanted outcomes that they have. And these students experience school failure, um, or other outcomes without displacement. Then these interventions that we need to use the school program for, um, to bring them back and make sure that they are achieving their goals. And so this program helps them do that. Uh, our students are at risk, um, for several different reasons. Um, some are at risk of dropout, dropping out, some it's grade retention. We have some that just have school, um, poor school attendance, and they're tardy a good number of times. Um, unmanageable behavior is some of the issues that we have there. Substance abuse and other health risks are there, um, abuse and neglect. And we also have, um, some that are not currently inadequate for, um, family, community, and other school support programs. So we bring them in and we serve those students to the best that we can to make sure that we are, um, giving them the best education possible. Um, the student demographics currently, um, is twenty for the spring. And, um, last fall was also twenty. Currently, we have three in sixth grade, two in seventh grade, four in eighth grade. We have nine in, uh, I'm sorry, seven in ninth grade, one in tenth grade, and two eleventh, and one in twelfth. And Ms. Tracy?
Um, it, it, well, I call it AOP, so just to make it short. Um, but at AOP, we, um, operate under the Ed Minimum program. And for Ed Minimum, there are two programs, there's Ed Options and there's Apex. Apex is a program that we use for credit recovery. Most of our high schools are in that program, it's for students who have attempted a course, but for whatever reason did not pass. They have to have at least a fifty average to get into credit recovery. And once they're in credit recovery, they will get a pass if they make at least a sixty average. So anything lower than a sixty, they're still going to have to repeat the course. But if they make a sixty, they get on their, um, transcript, it'll be a P, what it says is passed, because they do not get the credit for whatever grade they may have. So the grade is not incorporated in their GPA, but they do get a pass and they will receive that credit. Oh, I didn't push it hard enough. Um, the other program we had is Ed Options. Ed Options is an initial credit course. We use that for our middle school students as well as our high school students who have, um, let's say we finish up a credit recovery course, but we still need some other courses, so then we, um, do initial courses for those. Those, um, courses are actually taught by licensed certified teachers. Um, each student, um, joins what we call a live session. And if they cannot do a live session, they do what we call a live recorded session. So each day, what they do, the first thing we ask them to do once we start class is you pull up your schedule for the day, it tells us when your lives are. And so based on when your lives are, or when, um, you have a live recorded session, we can move to a recorded session if you don't have a live. But we try to get the kids to join a live every day, so they have contact with the teacher. Um, time management, our schedule, one thing we figured we had to have a schedule. Our kids normally arrive at AOP around, um, eight twenty five, eight thirty from Riverside High School on the bus. And that's when everybody's there together, we all go to breakfast together, we come back, we get our food and come back. Um, once we get back, they have, um, breakfast from eight thirty to eight forty five, maybe a little bit longer depending on what time we got there. But normally by nine, we're ready to start, um, classes. And we try to keep a sequence, let's say math, science, then go to lunch. There are some days when the live may be an English live, and we would prefer you being alive than to be according to our schedule. So we may have some doing English at that time because we want them in their live sessions. But we, um, definitely follow a schedule on time and we move from class to class. The one thing I would like you to look at is that at one twenty five, we have what we call our socio-emotional learning break. Or either, um, we, um, give them like a free afternoon, we go outside to take a break, because it is a live. 'Cause it is a lot being on a computer, um, all day, every day. And that is how our structure works. We are computer oriented, there are no in-person teachers. We have, um, classroom facilitators who help out with learning. But otherwise, they are on computers all day. Uh, monitoring, we monitor our kids online through several methods. We monitor their actual progress and movement on the computer through, um, application called Securly. That way, we can see what screens they have available on their computers. I have had to lock a mini screens lately. Um, 'cause as we get closer to the summer, everybody get a little frogish. So we're locking screens and I hear somebody say, "Ms. Tracy, please unlock my screen." And I'd be like, "When I'm ready." 'Cause I need them to take some time and think about the fact that you were not where you should've been. But, um, for the most part, we do have pretty good compliance for being on the right, um, programs. Um, as far as progress, we do monitor daily. Um, I stay in the computer, 'cause I wanna know what they're doing. Um, as far as getting closer to credits or getting the progress they need to get back to their home school. Um, we will either do individual sessions or sometimes we have to do group sessions. If we feel like the group is not moving, then we address the group as a whole. Otherwise, we do individual sessions. Um, I got so now, they tell me we need to go to the office and talk, because they wanna address what do they need. Um, and we try to keep abreast of that. We make parent contact at least monthly. Um, there are some I have to make contact more often. I use whatever method works for the family. I have done home visits, I got one parent, she will only text, but I'll text with her. Um, phone calls, it's whatever works for them, we'll do it. Um, I try to meet every family where they are. And that seems to be working. Um, goal setting. We set clear goals from the top. Normally, when we have a meeting with the principal to bring a child to, um, Alternative Learning Program, we set the goals there. What do they need to get back to their home school? There will always be an academic goal as well as a behavioral goal. Um, and we keep them informed on how they're doing. I had a group that asked today, "How many, um, discipline referrals do I have? Or how many write-ups do I have in the system?" I told them, "Let me worry about that." But we do try to keep them aware of what's going on. Um, credits earned, first semester, high school and Ed Options earned four full credits and one partial credit. A partial credit in Ed Options is based on, um, the way they do the semester is the way we would do a, a regular class. You would have like, um, first nine weeks, second nine weeks. So they may have, uh, part A and then part B. I think the problem we were having in the beginning is they were staying on part A too long. Like if they didn't pass part A, they would just recycle them through A. When technically, if you put A and B together, that's how you get your score. So we started moving past that. As long as you was in a reasonable score to make up on the second end, we could move past that. Um, so we are doing a little bit better right now. We have five full credits, we got six partial credits that are leading to full credits. Um, having to make some phone calls and stay on some parents about getting on your babies, so we can get these credits in. Um, middle school, we have four credits in Ed minim, others rolled over to second semester. Middle school does not end the way, um, high school ends. So they're not getting a credit, they're just continuing that curriculum. And, but I will say their grades are looking much better. Now, their grades at current may not always be what their progress grade is, 'cause we have a target at the end. And we're like, trying to get them to understand, "I need your target grade to be where it should be." So we're working on that, but we are making progress. Um, attendance. Attendance is definitely an issue on my high school side, it is not on my middle school side. Middle school parents are right there, the kids are there every day. There's some days I'd be like, "Ooh, you can't." But, um, it's a great day. High schoolers, that's where we struggle the most, especially the ones that are already sixteen years old. Um, because they struggle academically. My rules are a little bit tight. Um, although we, you know, we give some, some leeway, we gotta understand what the goal is to get back to regular school. And we gotta have some behavioral changes to do that. So we adjust that accordingly, I'm sorry, y'all. Um, so what we, what we're doing is we're allowing for modified schedules for some of my high school. High schoolers, I got one who works a job part of the day. Um, his setup was to come two days a week. Now, he struggled with that even still, but he, he's working. I give him credit. I told you, if I sho- if I see you showing up online, that tells me you're still with me. So, um, I'm checking for the online attendance. Even if you're not in the building, I need to see you online. And if we're doing that, then we're making progress. Any questions about A O P?
And I just have to say, she had a tremendous amount that was thrown on her to learn. And she did a fabulous job.
She had, I'm sorry, what did she have?
A tremendous amount to learn as far as Apex and Ed Options, and she did a fabulous job.
'Cause I can say in the beginning, I did not like Ed, Ed minim, I'm like, I did not like this program. But we had to learn the program. So once we learn how the lives work and where to find things for the kids, it's been smoother.
Ms. Smith has done a phenomenal job getting this program going on the right track. And also, um, Ms. Thompson also works in the program. I was actually, actually visited today and her class runs like a top. Just phenomenal job. She's sitting there noting when students go to the restroom, what everyone is working on. She's looking at their screen on her screen. Just so much progress being made in this program, thanks to, to both of these ladies.
And I will give her her props. She's my math guru, so she does more than math than I do. She, so she provides a lot of assistance and coaching in math.
So one thing, um, Ms. Smith, that I wanna say, I like what you said, and you said it a couple of times. You said, "What can they do to get back into their home school?"
That is the goal.
And to me, that's the goal, that, but that's the real goal.
Working to get back.
Um, I'm curious, the breakdown, twenty male to female?
Uh, predominantly male, but we have a significant number of females. I think in the middle school side, I think we said we had seven middle schools, three of them are females.
So do you separate the middle from the high school?
We do, for the most part.
Good, okay.
We, I do have all my middle schools on one side, my high schools on another side.
That's a big.
But there's a couple of high schoolers that are on my middle school side. And that is because I need to break up the dynamics of the high school side. It's like I got one that has high energy.
On the high school side?
Yes, and he will drag everybody with him. It's like they followers for him. And I'm like, "No, sir, I need you two over here." But it works. They, they don't bother the middle schools, the middle schools, they interact very well. So we strategically pick who we place where.
So what can the Board do to support A O P?
A O P? If we could just get some tutors, that's all. I, you know, the biggest thing I think A O P needs is they struggle with math. We know these kids struggle academically. Uh, we know that around the county, teachers are a shortage. So I'm not even asking for those. But if we could get some tutors to help with math, 'cause my math starts at about eighth grade. With the new curriculum, you know, the curriculum that everybody's been using. Ms. Thompson is up to math two, because I think she sat more in the math one and two class. But beyond that, and we've had some in math three, the struggle has been real. We've been Googling and Mr. J N and everybody else trying to find answers on how to make that work. But tutors would be a benefit to that program. And to the kids there. Any other questions?
Thank you for what you do.
I thank y'all for the opportunity. I love my babies.
Okay, next is the C T E report. Mr. Guard?
Good evening. What I'd like to do is part of our, um, as part of the Perkins Five Legislation federally, we have to do an update every two years of our program. And so this program update covers the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six, uh, school year. So I'm gonna do just a quick overview, so you can kinda see where we're going for the next two years. So our C T E funding overview, and we've talked about this before, but we're funded by three main fund sources. P R C thirteen, which is months of employment for our teachers and staff. P R C fourteen, which is money we receive from the state. And P R C se- excuse me, seventeen, is money that we receive from the federal government. All right, so this is our slide, is our breakdown of our staff. Um, so basically, at Riverside High School, on that campus, we have two family and consumer science teachers. At Riverside Middle School, we have two C T E teachers, one that stem in career exploration and one agriculture biotechnology. Um, with the South Creek High School position, that's a family and consumer science position housed at the Riverside Campus. Uh, at South Creek Middle School, we have, uh, computer science, which is grant-funded, which we'll talk more about in a few minutes. And then we have an agriculture position, biotech. And at the Innovation Campus, we have two district positions, which is our C T E coordinator, which does our curriculum and our special populations, Ms. Kristen Berry. And then we have a career development coordinator, which is one that we've added this year, which is Mr. Nguyen. We have one Adobe Academy teacher, two agriculture teachers, one in the mechanical realm and one at the animal science biotech realm. We have one that's doing game art design and two health science teachers with that. Uh, just a quick overview, we currently will have a hundred and fifty-three months of employment for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, which is down from a hundred and fifty-six last year. But with our grant funding and what we have access to, we're gonna have three months to work with on the back end for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year with the grant funding. So what, some of the adjustments we've had to make this year is we are adjusting for increased enrollment. Uh, our duplicated number, which means students that have taken C T E courses, uh, currently for this year at the high school level, in the fall, we had five hundred and eighty students with duplicate enrollment take C T E courses. In this spring, we're up again at six hundred and seven students taking C T enrollment. Now, that includes students that might take, uh, animal science and then Ms. Revel's this course, uh, with health science. So we have a lot of that going on with the popularity of some of our courses. Um, additional pathway options that we're, we're having to look at and meet those needs are the computer science, uh, data science and plant science. Those are some that we're looking forward toward the future. Uh, the plant science, we're gonna be able to do, because we received a ninety-seven thousand dollar grant for a greenhouse. And we're in the final stages of working with, uh, the maintenance department and the town of Williamson to get the plan approval, so we can go ahead and begin in construction, so it'll be ready to go in the fall. Another item is the increased, uh, career exploration with fifth through twelfth grade, with a heavy emphasis on fifth grade, thanks to Mr. Nguyen coming on board. Because the best thing to do for kids is they, if they don't know what careers are out there or what options are out there, when they get to high school, they don't know how to plan. Or middle school even now, they don't know how to plan or look at things that they're interested in. Uh, the computer science position at South Creek Middle School, of course, is grant-funded. It's a fifty thousand dollar a year recurring grant through P R C seventy-nine. This will allow us to hire a second teacher at South Creek Middle, which will do two things. One, it will give them a chance to explore the career science or computer science field, which is very popular, with a lot of different career options. And the other thing, it'll help relieve some pressure on the South Creek Middle School's schedule by giving the, um, Mr. Howard next year, another teacher to work with scheduling. Uh, as we look forward, yeah, we're gonna continue to upgrade equipment, um, and new equipment for additional pathways, which we'll talk more about in a minute. Uh, strengthening our C T S Os, which are the F F A, um, Health Science, Skills USA, uh, Family and Consumer Science, some which were highlighted this evening, and those teachers, which is a real testament to the teachers' work. And finally, and uh, is more professional development, where we can incorporate science, reading and math. So as the district becomes more vertically aligned in our curriculum areas, C T E wants to do their part to be able to participate in those areas and help improve test scores, student performance and instruction. Just a quick breakdown, um, the way fourteen money works is that is the money that's used to support your program. Our largest percentage of all the things listed are instructional supplies. So everything from buying food, uh, for our family and consumer science teachers, all the way from lumber and then consumables, like with our Paxton Patterson Labs, but that is our largest, uh, percentage of instructional supplies. Uh, this upcoming year, we're gonna receive forty-six thousand, uh, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents, which is down from twenty-three, twenty-four, which we received a little over forty-seven thousand dollars last year. And that is due to our, um, A D M, uh, number drop. 'Cause remember, with C T E, we're not funded by schools or sites, we're funded just on straight, um, A D M numbers. All right, on our federal seventeen budget, that is for program improvement or program advancement. So fourteen is used to kind of maintain the programs and do what we need to do. Seventeen is to, is, and to increase or to improve. Our biggest, um, one that we've done with this, as you've seen this evening and throughout the school year, at the middle schools and the high schools, is our Paxton Patterson Labs and those type of upgrades. Because they are the, even though they're expensive, they're still the most economical way to jumpstart programs and get teachers the training that they need to be able to do the career advancements that we need to do. Um, and like I said, with our P R C seventeen, uh, we've got, they have a- they have not released it yet, but they've asked to project on last year's numbers. And last year, we received a little over seventy-seven thousand dollars, so that's how we have built it this year. All right, so budget needs for the improvement, kind of under the P R C seventeen a little bit, which we've already mentioned, is continued to upgrade equipment. Uh, the main key with all of this on this document or this page is that what we've done is we've tried to work very hard and very purposeful with the teachers to develop a three to five-year rotation program for equipment. So in other words, don't wait till something breaks. If something, so we go ahead and rotate it out, and if it, we have an extra piece of equipment, we can use it somewhere else or do something else with. But our thing is to go ahead, so some things are gonna go out, we're already rotating out in three years. Some things, we can wait till five. So that's what we're trying to do, to make the best use of our dollars without having to go into other funding. And also working with the, um, and like I said, with the career exploration events, we'll be doing the target fifth through eighth grade for program improvement. All right, some other areas that we're talking about, uh, with the, uh, C T S Os is, you know, to better develop understanding of those and what those can do for students. Um, uh, the leadership development, the travel, the different experiences and career areas. The one that we really are going, that will be the big push next year, Skills USA. That has kind of become, in a positive way, with like the pedagogy, that's kinda like the wild, wild west of C T S Os. Because they have, um, it's the old VICA, they've taken some of F B L A and D E C A and they've kinda combined it under those. And what this gives our students an opportunity to do is basically, if you can't make it work in other areas, they can do it in Skills USA. And so we've had their state folks out at our school doing training at the Innovation Campus several times. So we're looking forward to moving forward with that next year. Uh, continue to upgrade courses and equipment and improve education and promotion of our programs. Because sometimes when students find out what your program is about, they actually become more interested in it. And it's kinda shocking in a way, but it's like, you know, they've got to understand what the program is. Like agriculture, education is, you know, that's the number one, um, industry in North Carolina. But kids still think it's the traditional sows, cows and plows. And it's a lot more than that now, with the biotech and the other thing. That's not an original. So, um, our final thing, uh, just to say this, is like I said, uh, we're gonna continue to add more to the Paxton Patterson Labs, as you can see down there at the middle and high school, to really increase the, and increase the training for those teachers. Uh, the vet assistant program that we're tr- we're working with, so that students will be able to sit for that and be able to go out and leave high school with, uh, vet assisting, um, credentials. Uh, we're also looking at with the computer science and the data science pathways here at the Innovation Campus to get our kids twenty-first century-ready in the technology and computer field. And then, of course, with the new greenhouse. And the final thing is the, with, uh, what we've done this year with our business advisory board is that big final push to get our kids out and ready for the world of work with internships. We had twenty-six this year that started, they've all been very successful. Uh, now we're working with the businesses, they've, they've stepped their internship toe in the water and they've been fine. So now we're trying to work with the pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeships. So what we'd like to be able to do is show these kids that they have a way in Martin County, if they choose, if they wanna make a career in Martin County, go to work in Martin County. And what we can do here and what the partnerships we can do with the apprenticeships with Martin, that we can hopefully not only build a workforce, but they'll stay in Martin County, hopefully. And that's the report. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Guard.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Dr. Pike?
Yes, um, school board members, we've been discussing the issues present at South Creek High School throughout the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, these issues have included poor academic performance, a low graduation rate, a detrimental teacher shortage, as well as detrimental, detrimentally limited opportunities for students. Due in most part to the teacher shortage, we temporarily merged the schools mid-year. But I must say, from there, the students have absolutely thrived. In talking with the students, they can see and feel the difference, and their benchmark data shows the difference as well. I truly believe, based on the data that I have received through conducting a thorough study, that it is in the best interest of South Creek High School students to remain permanently merged with Riverside High School. Tonight, I'm asking the Board to permanently close South Creek High School, thus unifying and consolidating South Creek and Riverside High School and creating one high school in Martin County. thus unifying and consolidating South Creek and Riverside High School and creating one high school in Martin County.
Okay. Ms. Cargill, are you still with us? She wanted to address this.
Ms. Cargill. Ms. Cargill.
Can I make a motion?
Can you hear us, Ms. Gale?
Give me just a minute if you don't mind.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
I make a motion that we permanently close South Creek High School.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to permanently close South Creek High School merging with Riverside. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you.
Board, I would also like to ask that since our children will now be unified as one consolidated high school, that in the spirit of unity, we change the name to Martin County High School.
Move to change our name to Martin County High School.
We have a motion and a second to name the merged school, Martin County High School. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you. Was there anything else? Okay. And we will come back at a later time and talk about mascots and such.
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education into closed session, subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A one and A six to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute one fifteen C dash three nineteen, and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A three to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three point three eighteen point one one A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty USC one-two-three-two G and North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash four-zero-two. The board also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A five.
We have a motion to go into closed session, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, closed session granted.